We're just about ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Showtime.
All good?
Yep.
Very good. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Ridgewood Village Council Regular Public Meeting, February 20, 10th, 2021, 8:00 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall by Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same. Provided by law of a schedule including the date and time of this meeting. Due to the fact that we continue to meet through a remote meeting format, there are some required announcements to be made, and Councilman Walsh will be kind enough to read those.
All participants are muted during this meeting. Anyone wishing to make comments may do so during the comments from the public and during the public hearings on any ordinances by dialing star nine on your phones to raise your hand, and then once you're recognized by dialing star six on your phones to unmute, or by raising your hand icon if you're on your computers. You must state your name and address for the record. Members of the public may also submit written comments to us for any future remote meetings by either email to Donna Jackson, Deputy Village Clerk at DJackson@RidgewoodNJ.net with the subject line Comments for Village Council Meeting, or written letter to Donna Jackson, Deputy Village Clerk at Village Hall. Written comments must have a name and address and be received by 4:00 PM on the day before the remote meeting in order to be read into the record during the meeting. All written comments must adhere to the time limits already set by ordinance. Members of the public commenting during a remote meeting shall not act in any manner to disrupt the meeting. If anyone becomes disruptive during the meeting, they will be muted. If time permits, the disruptive individual shall be allowed to speak after all other members of the public are provided an opportunity to comment. Any continued disruption may result in the member being prevented from speaking during the remainder of the meeting. Disruptive conduct includes but is not limited to shouting, interruption, and the use of profanity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perrin.
Here.
Councilwoman Reynolds.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Seaton.
Here.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
Sorry. And Mayor Newton.
Here.
Wait, I was here. Okay, very good. Please join us in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, indivisible. Thank you for the justice for.
Please join us in a moment of silence for our men and women serving our nation. Our first responders are blue and gold star families and for all those who are suffering through this pandemic. Very good. Thank you. We have no financial reports. I move the village council minutes of October 28th and December 2nd, 2020 have been reviewed by the village council now available in village car service, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Erin.
I sent in a few typos to be edited. Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Seaton.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Newtonson. Yes. And now we have a few proclamations to be read. We'll be starting with Deputy Mayor Seaton for the Read Across America Day proclamation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the National Education Association's Read Across America Day will be conducted on March 2nd, 2021, as a national celebration of reading and the birthday of Theodore Seuss Gassel, better known as Dr. Seuss. And whereas Read Across America NJ will be observed statewide by the New Jersey Education Association in partnership with the New Jersey State League of Municipalities, the New Jersey Library Association, and their local affiliates across the state to promote reading and adult involvement in the education of our community's students. And whereas, the citizens of the village of Ridgewood stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs in the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas the village of Ridgewood has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that educational investment is the key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. Now therefore be it resolved that the village council of the village of Ridgewood calls on the citizens of the village of Ridgewood to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult on March 2nd, 2021, and be it further resolved that the village council of the village of Ridgewood enthusiastically endorses the NEAs Read Across America Day and recommits the village of Ridgewood to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome.
Councilman Reynolds will be reading Super Science Saturday proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas Saturday, March 6th, 2021, is the 33rd Annual Super Science Saturday, which is a community-wide family fair dedicated to the idea that science is exciting and fun. And whereas this event is billed as the greatest science extravaganza in northern New Jersey. And whereas more than 1,000 science lovers from Ridgewood and surrounding communities flock to Ridgewood High School to see a host of science exhibits, workshops, and demonstrations. And whereas Super Science Saturday appeals to everyone from the casual observer to the aspiring scientists sparking an interest in students, adults, and organizations wishing to further explore their passion. And whereas some of the events will include virtual pancakes with penguins and lots of other fun interactive virtual events. Whereas this annual event was started over 30 years ago by award-winning science teacher Jim Wallace to encourage families to share their scientific interests and talents, and is now run by a parents committee of dedicated volunteers. And whereas this invaluable service to our youth has become a hallmark of goodwill and cooperation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village council of the village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim March 6th, 2021, a Super Science Saturday to be held virtual due to COVID-19 in the village of Ridgewood and invites science enthusiasts of all ages to participate in this free virtual event.
Thank you, Councilwoman Reynolds.
Thank you.
Now we will have a proclamation recognizing 100th anniversary of Ridgewood Water, read by Councilwoman Perrin.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas on March 1st, 1921, the village of Ridgewood entered into an agreement with the Bergen Aqueduct Company for the purchase of the water system and all appurtenances located in the village of Ridgewood, borough of Midland Park, and borough of Glen Rock. And whereas Bergen Aqueduct started as a privately owned utility in 1900 with a franchise to operate a water supply system in the village of Ridgewood, service was expanded into Glen Rock in 1903 as the owners of this system established a second water system called Bergen Water Company in neighboring Midland Park, and subsequently connected the systems together. The village of Ridgewood purchased the combined systems in 1921. And whereas, the official transfer of the assets likely occurred in June of 1921, beginning the 100-year run for the publicly owned utility known as Ridgewood Water. 12 years later, in the fall of 1933, the township of Wyckoff entered into an agreement with the village to extend the system into the township for domestic and public use. This agreement was later expanded into other parts of the township by agreements in 1947 and 1955. And whereas today Ridgewood Water is proud to serve the four communities and the over 61,000 residents and commercial users. Safe drinking water is provided to each customer from 52 groundwater wells that are subsequently treated at 31 treatment plants to meet federal and state standards. The treatment, the treated water is distributed through 275 miles of pipeline, 5,630 valves, 10 storage tanks, and 1,875 fire hydrants, maintaining pressure, flow, and fire protection. And whereas, although the pandemic limits the ability to celebrate the event, Ridgewood Water will be marking this 100th anniversary in several other ways this year, such as highlighting its history in online public forums that are planned for March and April, launching the new Ridgewood Water website, launching Water Smart and the new customer payment portal, breaking ground on the renovation and relocation of Ridgewood Water operations to 111 North Maple Avenue, which will complete the village campus along this main thoroughfare, initiating groundbreaking redistribution of system treatment to further its safe drinking water commitment, consolidating the 31 areas of treatment down to 12, adding water filtration to remove emerging contaminants and improve water quality. And whereas the village council of the village of Ridgewood wishes to recognize the foresight the village's community leaders had 100 years ago, now therefore be it resolved that the village council of the village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim June 1st, 2021, as the 100th anniversary of Ridgewood Water, and hereby commends the efforts by all representatives, employees, and associates that helped shape Ridgewood Water and sustain its operations for the past 100 years, and their commitment to continually improve Ridgewood Water as it enters its next century.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perrin. Thank you, everyone, for the proclamations. I just want to say that as the village council, serving as the Board of Directors for Ridgewood Water, I don't think any of us could be more proud of the work and the effort and having this opportunity to serve our community and deliver safe water. So we're really excited about this. It's a great milestone and a great moment in history for Ridgewood. With that, we will be moving on to comments from the public, not to exceed three minutes per person for a total of 40 minutes. And just real quick before we begin, do we have any written? Yes, we have four. Four. Okay. So what we'll do is we will take call-ins first, and once we wrap those up, we'll see what time is left and decide whether or not to hold those to the end. Okay, Dylan, who do we have?
All right. First person coming in is Hans.
Good evening. Good evening. Mr. Lehman, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Hans Jürgen Lehman, 234 Union Street. Good evening, council members. I have always felt that Ridgewood is an exceptionally welcoming community. So many services are provided within our village, which in part make this such an attractive place to live. I am enthusiastic, I am an enthusiastic proponent of age-friendly Ridgewood, of the care the village takes with its senior residents, as well as our efforts to provide affordable housing in what is generally considered an expensive place to live. To that end, let me thank the council for its expeditious actions where Ridgecrest is concerned. For those of you who may not know, Ridgecrest is one of those jewels of our village. It provides affordable housing predominantly for senior residents, but also for younger persons who may be otherwise abled. You, the council, have helped to make the continued operation of Ridgecrest possible. I thank you for that. Now, I have a reputation for critiquing this council over the years, so I would be remiss if I did not address a matter that has been before this council for many months now. You have heard from many, many current and former residents about Health Barn. Many of the persons who have spoken up about Health Barn are young participants of the many programs offered by Stacy Ann Tean, as well as their parents, and more importantly, many of the immediate neighbors of Health Barn. So my question to you is as follows. If you can act so expeditiously where Ridgecrest is concerned, why are you so reluctant to move on Health Barn, a property so many of us treasure, and a property which actually adds to the village's treasury? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Neil Sullivan, please unmute.
Hey, good evening. Neil Sullivan, 335 East Ridgewood Avenue in the village of Ridgewood. I've heard good news that all the parties to the pickleball, what do you call it, the dilemma, have sat down at the table trying to adjudicate some sort of solution to the to the problem, which I think is a great step forward. The, since, since the residents-only policy of playing pickleball or tennis on the courts, that should greatly reduce, maybe by 50%, the people playing on the courts, but the out-of-towners were probably making up about 50%. So that should reduce the demand and use of the courts, which would somewhat relieve the noise situation. Just the suggestion, I, I think the easiest thing to do in this situation is to keep the courts where they are in Glen without disrupting the tennis courts. I play tennis too, and having a, say for instance, over in, I forget the name of the courts over there, off of Duramis, having a pickleball court in a tennis court area is very disruptive. It's a different kind of sound, the movement's different, it's a whole different kind of thing. It would, it would cut off the concentration of the tennis players. You'd find, you'd find tennis players coming down to the town to the voice of opinion. So I would suggest just keeping it where it is, hopefully find a solution to some of the noise, even reducing the amount of time played there. If it were played in the morning, maybe some of the people living in those homes would be going after work during the week. They wouldn't even hear the noise at that time. Also, just an aspect of pickleball, which I think I want to emphasize is that this is not just a sport. Many senior citizens play it. It offers an opportunity. One of the, one of the problems with senior citizenship is not with everybody, but many people is depression. They're isolated. They don't see many people. This actually is a community sport, gets people together, has a whole different benefit, especially to older people. And I think that's an aspect that is even greater than the sport and is extremely useful. Also, it builds up tremendous, tremendous community spirit because people get to know each other in the town or the village that didn't know each other before. That only enhances the quality of life within a community, that people are more aware of each other and they know each other. It could lead to more people volunteering and doing things in the town. So I'm just, just to end it, I know you're tired of hearing about pickleball, but good luck in the negotiations. I mean, it offers a chance for a solution which would come with compromise, obviously. So good luck with that, and thanks for building the courts and thanks for continuing to listen to it. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, have a good evening.
Good deal.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak, please raise your hand. I'm not showing anybody at this time, so if anyone wants to read.
Okay. The first one is from Jean Solomon, 648 Spring Avenue. Dear Mayor Newton, Deputy Mayor Seaton, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Perrin, Councilwoman Reynolds, thank you for keeping your eye on the pickleball. The ongoing discussions with the neighbors and players and the collaborative work with the Parks and Recreation Department make me feel optimistic that a plan for reopening the courts is forthcoming. I just want to remind you that pickleball is not a warm weather sport. 45 degrees and a little bit of sun will have some diehards venturing out for an hour of physical activity and social interaction. So please understand that time is of the essence. Every day without pickleball does not maintain the status quo and negatively impacts the players, both physically and emotionally. As always, I appreciate your consideration and efforts. The next one is from Kathleen Azara, 955 Hill Crest Road. Dear village manager, deputy village clerk, and village council members, I'm writing to you as a resident of the village since 1971 and enthusiastic pickleball player for the past six years. As you probably know, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country and has broad appeal to all generations, most especially among senior citizens who find it relatively easy to pick up the basics and enjoy the chance for some physical activity and social connection. Pickleball has quickly gained a following in Ridgewood and no doubt will continue to grow in popularity as it has in communities across the country. Ridgewood needs to respond to these trends in a proactive way. I find the recent decision to lock the courts in the village to be a totally unproductive solution to the current reality. I know the village has a strong interest in keeping tax-paying seniors as vital members of the community and providing sufficient resources for outdoor activities such as pickleball must be a part of that strategy. Locking courts is not a strategy and must be reversed while the village plans for long-term solutions such as building new courts on other village properties. The demands and pressures are not going away. The council needs to show leadership and listen to a vital and growing segment of the village. The next one is from Doug Roten, 120 Melrose Place. Dear village council members, I write to you again today to support the timely opening of all four Glen School pickleball courts. I thank the mayor, council members, village manager, and Parks and Recreation for all the time they are giving to this important issue. In regards to your consideration for short and long-term solutions, I ask that you keep in mind that pickleball can't be played on wet or snowy courts. Few people play when winds exceed 10 to 12 miles per hour, and only a very few hardy souls will venture out to the courts when the temperature drops below freezing. Below are some public facts that should be taken into consideration when balancing neighbor complaints and community activity needs. Measurable precipitation of more than one tenth of an inch falls around 120 days per year, and there are an average of 25 days a year when there is at least one inch of snow on the ground. Obviously, small amounts of rain can dry, so some and maybe many of these days would allow partial play. But the reality is pickleball isn't played close to 365 days a year in northern New Jersey. The facts are measurable, measurable precipitation, less than one tenth of an inch falls on approximately 120 days per year. Fall months are usually the driest with an average of eight days with measurable precipitation. Other seasons average between nine and 12 days per month with measurable precipitation. Rutgers Climate Lab, there are an average of 25 days a year when there is at least one inch of snow on the ground, more or less depending on your location in the state of New Jersey. Average number of freeze-free days in the northern highlands is 163, 179 in the central and southern interior, and 2,217 along the coast. Climate and zip code 07450, Ridgewood, New Jersey. New Jersey gets 48 inches of rain on average per year. U.S. averages 38 inches of rain per year. Ridgewood, New Jersey averages 24 inches of snow per year. The U.S. averages 28 inches of snow per year. On average, there are 203 sunny days per year in Ridgewood. The U.S. averages 205 sunny days. Ridgewood gets some kind of precipitation on average, 122 days per year. Precipitation is rain, snow, sleet, or hail. If it falls to the ground, in order for precipitation to be counted, you have to get at least 0.01 inches on the ground to measure. The last one is from Lily and Blood, 250 North Maple Avenue. Dear village of Ridgewood Council, my family, Dave, and three children moved to Ridgewood in 1971, knowing that the village was known to have good schools and was family-oriented. Over the years, we as a family have been involved in numerous activities. These include tennis, soccer, wrestling, lacrosse, baseball, softball, swimming, the Y, recycling committee, community gardens, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, home and school associations. Tick Tock, Save Vetsfield, Preserve Graden are some that we gave time and energy to. We have been players, coaches, organizers, and supporters over the years. Now with our children grown, Dave and I, as 80-year-olds, continue to enjoy living in town. It has meant so much to us. We like being able to walk to the library, Veterans Field, the train and bus stations into town and to the grocery stores. We love Ridgewood. Dave and I learned to play pickleball with the Ridge Parks and Recreation Department. It is a wonderful way to stay healthy by exercising and being outdoors. This past year has been challenging with COVID limiting activities. Playing pickleball on the Glen Courts provided us and many others of all ages the opportunity to be active and have safe social contact. This activity for us and other seniors in town has made this past year manageable. $50,000 of taxpayers' money was used to provide for pickleball courts and sound reducing panels at Glen School. Please open the courts that have been locked since January 1st. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Dylan, do we have anyone else?
I am showing no others.
Okay, very good. So with that, we're going to close public comments, and we just want to thank the public for those courteous feedback. We always appreciate it. And with that, we'll go to the manager's report.
Okay. We just ask again as a reminder that any time that there's any snow or ice predicted, please bring your regular garbage cans to the end of your driveway whenever they're, you know, again, is predicted, or if it's already falling. We will not pick up garbage in your rear yard until you have a clear path to your garbage cans. A couple days ago, we had very little snow. However, our garbage pickup employees did try to go to the rear yards, and actually one slipped and fell and hit his head. Luckily, he is fine, but this is why we can't go to the rear yards. It's just very dangerous and it's a liability for our employees. So we thank you for helping us to keep our employees safe. COVID-19 vaccine, there's general information about vaccines through a state phone number, which is 855-568-0545, and they're staffed from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM with 250 agents answering questions and suggesting places to go for vaccines. You can also register at New Bridge Medical Center at newbridgehealth.org/covid, Holy Name Medical Center, holyname.org/covid19. So the Ridgewood Health Department, for those of you who have received notices, you know that, that the Ridgewood Health Department is not getting vaccines except for those who are due for second doses. So we've been told that we're not going to be receiving those vaccines for the foreseeable future, and, and so we'd like to encourage you to register on as many sites as possible. Our annual budget meetings will be held February 17th, 22nd, and 23rd, beginning at 5:00 PM. They're held via Zoom. Annual parking permits are still on sale at the village hall reception desk. We, I continue to remind people, we do have 15-minute complimentary parking spaces on Oak Street, Chestnut Street, North Broad Street, which are off of East Ridgewood Avenue and Willsie Square on the west side. They are limited to 15 minutes only. Anyone who stays in those spots longer than 15 minutes, even if you pay the kiosk, will be summoned. It's basically for a quick errand or picking up food, or, you know, just doing something very quickly. So we do encourage you to use those spots, but again, please keep it to 15 minutes. I do want to mention, this is a time of year where the Film Festival starts here in Ridgewood, and this year will be, will be virtual, and it's sponsored by the Ridgewood Guild, and it'll be Saturday, February 27th to Wednesday, March 3rd. You visit the Film Festival website to purchase tickets, which is ridgewoodguildfilmfest.com. Super Science Saturday, as previously mentioned, is free. It will be held on Saturday, March 6th, and it will be a virtual format. This is the 33rd year. It's 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM, and there's a host of different things that will be going on. We encourage you to, you know, join in on the virtual Super Science Saturday. There will be scientists who can show you how to build your own robots, construct an egg drop container, and cookie chemistry and much more. So it's www.supersciencessaturday.org. A couple of our events have been canceled this spring coming up. One is the annual baseball parade and family fun event, and the other one is the Earth Day Fair along with the daffodil festival and dog parade. The village council upcoming meetings are broadcast live. February 24th at 7:30 PM is a work session. March 3rd at 7:30 PM is another work session, and then March 10th will be our public meeting at 8:00 PM, and that will also have the introduction of our budget. Please remember, public meetings are at 8:00 PM. We do have hold at 7:30 PM pre-meeting, special public meeting where the agenda is discussed amongst the council members. That's also open to the public. You certainly can make public comment there, but if you want it to be in the main body of minutes for the main meeting, please wait till 8:00 PM on the public meeting nights. I want to remind everyone that all village offices will be closed on February 12th. At February 15th, in observance of the Lincoln's Birthday and President's Day holidays, there will be no garbage or recycling collection on those days, and the recycling section will also be closed. That's all I have.
I think Councilwoman Walsh had a question.
Yeah. So no, I actually have a comment about the COVID vaccine. So a, a number of the seniors that I helped with the adopt a senior, many of them don't have email. So they, actually, one of them called and said that they had tried calling around and were really having no luck and, and didn't have access to email. So I actually, they gave me their information and I relayed it, and subsequently I got two other calls because they must have talked to. two other calls because they must have talked to others that don't. So they all indicated that they watch, just like they did when this all first started, they watch the public access channel. So if we could put something on the public access channel where they can either call, but it sounded like they were all getting a dead end with phone calls, but maybe somehow that we can, I just, I mean, I took their information, but I felt a little uncomfortable because they started to give me their medical issues, and I was like, look, let me just give you, let me just send the email. I'll send it on my village email at the COVID. But maybe there's a way for us to, if they call us, to send them a form in the mail that they can, I guess, how can somebody who doesn't have email?
We don't have, we don't have vaccines coming to us, so we can't right now accept any, we have a list of 1,000 already that, you know, if we ever get vaccine again, that will be serving. I mean, certainly, people can sign up, but I would encourage them to call the state number, which I mentioned.
Apparently, it's going nowhere. They've called and, yeah, and see, this is a challenge for them that don't have emails because we all see it as a lifeline, but they, they just are, they're not having any luck with the phone calls, so.
If you have them and you want to pass their names on to me and their contact information, we'll see if someone can get in touch with them.
Yeah, but I think we should put something because now they're starting to, like, I had a son of one of them call me from Georgia because he had, somehow, he got my number and, you know, was like, we're trying desperately to get them in somewhere. And, you know, I don't know, they all watch TV, so maybe there's a way for us to, to put something else on the public access channel to maybe just also kind of keep the fear down of, you know, we're, you know, there's ways for you to do it, just.
So let me, I'm just gonna make this one suggestion. We can do that, but Heather, tomorrow, we also have the conference call, the vaccine call with the governor's office tomorrow. So why don't we ask them what recommendations they make when the seniors are getting a dead end, when they're dialing this, presumably, it's the number from the state that everybody's calling, and that's a dead end. So why don't we just add that to our notes for tomorrow? This way, when we have that call, we could at least report back to Councilwoman Walsh and let her know what information she should convey to those senior citizens.
Yeah, because I think one of them said that automated messages say, go online and email.
It's a problem. It's an assumption that the whole world is, you know.
Yeah.
Email.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Perrin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week, the Central Business District Advisory Committee met, and they were very appreciative of the snow removal efforts last week. However, they did mention that perhaps the grab-and-go spots could be prioritized, and sure enough, the very, that very day, those spots were cleared. So I really, they were very glad that that could happen, and thanks to our village engineer for that, who was at that meeting. And we also discussed the crash-resistant bollards, which we've all discussed here. I don't know if we, can't remember whether we discussed it in council or not, but anyway. There was also an idea of artists' murals in some of our back alleys, and that was an interesting discussion. We circulated a draft inventory to our members of things that our community is already doing versus things that a special improvement district could provide for our, our town. And that is just the beginning of our discussion of a potential CID or bid, as it's sometimes called. An interesting angle that came out was that the landlords really thought that Zoom allows them to connect in a way that they couldn't before. And of course, a CID or a bid is very dependent on whether the landlords are interested in doing it. So to the extent it could provide them a community, it's, it's, it's interesting. And Chief Lutke addressed some of the incidents at the Hudson Street Garage, and we also broached the idea of adopt a storm drain. And the Chamber of Commerce met this morning, and they too applauded the town's response to the snowstorms and also cleaning up downtown. One merchant called because the elevator in the, in the garage had, had gotten dirty, and the very next day, it was all cleaned up. So he was very impressed. A shopkeeper mentioned that he had to reprimand children taking their bikes up the elevator to the fourth floor of the garage, and that he called the police. They hope that council can come up with a way to fill the garage for revenue purposes, though they do suggest that temporary measures be taken so that we are not strapped when or if the parking demand reverts to what it was pre-COVID. We talked about the bus station. The Director of Chamber of Commerce commented that the bus station is critical in our town. It was her impression that people's housekeepers are coming in to go to homes in Ridgewood for work. And a restaurateur also said that a lot of his kitchen staff come to Ridgewood via the bus station. That led us to a discussion of the possibility or the need for a bath, a public bathroom or a porta-pot. Hillman Electric is celebrating 110 years of business in Ridgewood. This is Black History Month, and I just wanted to let people know that the Ridgewood Public Library has many interesting titles, films, documentaries, podcasts that are relevant to Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't had any meetings since last week, and I just wanted to say, Planning Board will be meeting this coming Tuesday, the 16th, and Citizen Safety Advisory Committee will be meeting on Thursday, the 18th. And that's it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the Green Team met, and as you can see, there's an introduction for a student liaison to the Green Team. It's a new membership slot, and that will be filled by Abigail Cloughier, and she was at the meeting, so she's already hit the ground running, and it's very exciting. The Green Team could use all the help that it could get because now we are gearing up big time for the first submission for the first round of certifications through Sustainable Jersey. The deadline for the first submission is June 6th, so we're divvying up priorities and going through the 400-plus-page report and updating information and adding new information because also the wildlife management pledge is on the consent agenda. And as I've said before, several other resolutions should be coming down the pike for the council so that we can put our submission together in a timely manner and hopefully make up some of the points that we lost and maintain our silver certification. Shade Tree Commission met yesterday and has submitted an update for last year for its five-year plan. I believe the Shade Tree Commission is in the fourth year of the five-year plan, so putting together a new plan might be in the works soon. So one of the big accomplishments was completing or almost completing the tree inventory, or at least mostly getting it done. That was something we've been trying to do for a number of years, and everybody is really proud of the work that, that's gone on there. And the Shade Tree Division in the Parks Department seems to really be using this, this tool to their advantage. So it's a big win for everybody. And the Tree City USA application has been submitted by the Chair, Andrew Lowry, so I'd just like to thank him for his work in getting that together, so once again, be a Tree City. And then Ian Keller and I believe Manish Sharamali are putting together an Emerald Ash Bore presentation for some point that we'd like to give to the council for some more information and a plan to deal with the seven, I believe it's 7% or 10% of the ash trees that we have in, in the village that are obviously going to get ravaged by this invasive insect, and perhaps we could preserve some of them or cut them down, but we're working on putting that plan together and bringing it to the council. And I think that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just when you have a chance, when next time you're at the Arts Council, I know that the discussion of the murals on some of the buildings has come up in the past, and so there's a little connection there, and I thought it would be important to tie in, just so you can kind of have that communication. It was a couple of years ago. Councilwoman Walsh?
So I actually don't have anything to report. Our Fields Committee meeting was canceled because of the storm, and stigma-free and Parks and Rec next week or in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. So Councilwoman Perrin hit the library items, Councilwoman Reynolds hit the Planning Board items. Fourth of July is canceled, the upcoming meeting, we're going to be rescheduling at a later date after we organize a meeting with the village, with the village because there needs to be some clarification as to what is and isn't doable and the anticipation and expectations for COVID-19. So that's a little up in the air right now. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit more information and we'll make a determination moving forward. And the only other thing I have, I believe, hopefully, is congratulations to our Ridgewood High School Jamboree. Jamboree raised over $200,000 this year. I think it was 200,000, 2021, which was very clever. I don't know who put the 21 bucks in, but it was very clever. And a congratulatory note to Director Rosie McCooey, 2021, and the producers, Dana Feeny and Atesta, Carolyn Mullen and Tom DeVita. And just for the record, this show is going to be extended. You can get the, the code to watch it by visiting rhsjamboree.org. It's been extended through the end of February, so you can go online. It's like, I think, 25 bucks, and you can watch the show. And the reason I think that it's really kind of fun to watch the show is because the entire event was filmed all over Ridgewood. So it's in the garage, it's on the streets, it's at the cash or shell, at the high school, on the fields, at Grayden. It's a lot of fun, and it highlights a whole bunch of areas in town. It's just wonderful, and, and it's a great fundraiser, a need-based scholarship fund. So everybody go. And once again, we have to thank the village manager, chief of police and the fire chief, and the Ridgewood Fire Department is highlighted in there as well. So it's lots of fun, and we thank everyone for their support and, and helping have, make that happen. So, and just for the record, Councilwoman Perrin and I are longtime Jamboree members, and so we encourage everyone to continue to support the program. So that's it, and I hope that's it. We haven't forgotten anything. With that, we're going to move on to our meeting. Resolution. Oh, you're muted, Heather. You're muted. That was so quiet.
The following resolution, number 21-17, will be adopted by, reading it by title only. It's authorized 2021 Temporary Water Utility Capital Budget. May I have motion?
I move that Resolution 21-17 be adopted.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move to ordinances. I move the first reading of Ordinance 3841.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Newton?
So ordered, will the clerk please read Ordinance 3841 by title?
A bond ordinance providing for design work in connection with well rehabilitation and well treatment improvements to ravine well and new mar well in and by the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $602,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of 571,000 bonds or notes of the village to finance part of the costs thereof.
I move that Ordinance 3841 be adopted on first reading and that February 24th, 2021 be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Resolutions for Ridgewood Water. The following resolutions, number 21-18 through 21-25, will be adopted by consent agenda with one vote by the village council. They will be read by title only. Title 59 Approval Laboratory Analysis Services. Award Contract Laboratory Analysis Services. Award Contract Under Bergen County Contract Materials and Supplies for Water Main Repairs. Award Additional Award of Contract Under State Contract Bytuminous Concrete and Various Road Materials. Authorized Change Order Improvements to Wild Houses and Transfer Stations, Southside, Eater, and Lakeview. Establish Interest Rates for Delinquent Payments to the Water Utility for 2021 and set grace period for payment of water utility bills. Accept Ridgewood Water Annual Maintenance Fee and Authorize Execution of Contract with Invoice Cloud for Payment Processing. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
Going on to ordinances, I move the first reading of Ordinance 3842.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes, so ordered, will the clerk please read Ordinance 3842 by title?
An Ordinance to Men, Chapter 145 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Fees, at Section 145-6, Enumeration of Fees Relating to Code Chapters.
I move that Ordinance 3842 be adopted on first reading and that February 24th, 2021 be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move, I move the first reading of Ordinance 3843.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes, so ordered, will the clerk please read Ordinance 3843 by title?
An Ordinance to Men, Chapter 26 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood, entitled Green Team.
I move that Ordinance 3843 be adopted on first reading and that February 24th, 2021 be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move the first reading of Ordinance 3844.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes, so ordered, will the clerk please read Ordinance 3844 by title?
An Ordinance to Men, Chapter 190 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood, at Section 190-67 and 190-83, to adopt new storm water management regulations consistent with NJDEP requirements.
I move that Ordinance 3844 be adopted on first reading and that February 24th, 2021 be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move the first reading of Ordinance 3845.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes, so ordered, will the clerk please read Ordinance 3845 by title?
An Ordinance to Men, Chapter 258 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Towing, at Section 258-3 Definitions, and at Section 258-5 Application, and at Section 258-7 Removal and Storage of Vehicles Fees.
I move that Ordinance 3845 be adopted on first reading and that March 10th, 2021 be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes, I move the first reading of Ordinance 3846.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
Yes.
Dog answered for me. So ordered, will the clerk please read Ordinance 3846 by title?
An Ordinance to Men, Chapter 145 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Fees, An ordinance to amend chapter one forty-five of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood fees at section one forty-five dash six enumeration of fees relating to code chapters.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight forty-six be adopted on first reading and that March tenth, 2021 be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon. I second the motion.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
I move the first reading of ordinance thirty-eight forty-seven.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. So ordered, will clerk please read ordinance thirty-eight forty-seven by title?
An ordinance to amend chapter two forty-nine of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Streets and Sidewalks at Article Three, Section Two Forty-nine dash sixty, permit not required of village.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight forty-seven be adopted on first reading and that March tenth, 2021 be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. I move the first reading of ordinance thirty-eight forty-eight.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
And so ordered, will clerk please read ordinance thirty-eight forty-eight by title?
An ordinance to amend chapter fifty-five of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood entitled Open Space Recreation, Farmland and Historic Preservation Committee.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight forty-eight be adopted on first reading and that March tenth, 2021 be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon.
Second.
No, sorry.
Sorry.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move the first reading of ordinance thirty-eight forty-nine.
Second. There we go.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. So ordered, will clerk please read ordinance thirty-eight forty-nine by title?
An ordinance to amend chapter one forty-five of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood fees at section one forty-five dash six enumeration of fees relating to code chapters.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight forty-nine be adopted on first reading and that March tenth, 2021 be fixed as the date for the hearing thereon.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. Uh, so on the next public hearing, I'm stepping away, but I think technically I'll just like kind of be sitting here. So the Deputy Mayor will take that. I'm stepping away.
I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-eight thirty-five by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
And Walsh?
Yes.
Will clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-eight thirty-five?
An ordinance to fix salaries, wages and other compensation of and for firefighters and fire superior officers of the Village of Ridgewood, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey.
The public hearing is now open. I'm showing none. All right. I move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight thirty-five be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
And Walsh?
Yes.
And I'm back. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-eight thirty-six by title on second reading and the public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. Will clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-eight thirty-six?
A bond ordinance providing for the 2021 road paving program and other related road work in and by the Village of Ridgewood in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $2,500,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $2,375,000 bonds or notes of the village to finance part of the costs thereof.
Very good. The public hearing is now open. As a reminder, members of the public would like to participate. Please raise your hand.
I am showing none.
Okay. Very good. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight thirty-six be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law. I second the motion.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-eight thirty-seven by title on second reading and the public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-eight thirty-seven?
An ordinance to amend chapter one general provisions of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood at section one dash fifteen violations and penalties.
And the public hearing is now open.
I am showing none.
Okay, very good. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight thirty-seven be adopted on second reading and the fi- and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. I move clerk read ordinance thirty-eight thirty-eight by title on second reading and the public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance forty-eight thirty-eight?
An ordinance to amend chapter two sixty-five of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood, vehicles and traffic at section two sixty-five dash fifty-nine, schedule nine, stop intersections and at section two sixty-five dash sixty, schedule ten, yield intersections.
Very good. The public hearing is now open.
I am showing none.
Okay, very good. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight thirty-eight be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-eight thirty-nine by title on second reading and the public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-eight thirty-nine?
An ordinance to fix a salary, wage or compensation of and for the supervisory employees of the Village of Ridgewood, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey.
Very good. The public hearing is now open. A reminder, anyone wants to participate in the public hearing, members of the public, please raise your hand.
I am showing none.
Very good. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-eight thirty-nine be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-eight thirty-four by title on third reading and that the public hearing thereon be open.
Second.
Parent?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-eight thirty-four?
An ordinance of the Village of Ridgewood authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Ridgewood Senior Citizen Housing Corp., Inc. and Ridgecrest Urban Renewal LLP, granting a tax exemption for Ridgecrest Senior Citizen Housing.
Very good. The public hearing on ordinance thirty-eight thirty-four was continued from January public meeting so that additional discussion could take place on this item. The public hearing on ordinance thirty-eight thirty-four is now continued.
Second.
Okay, so we can have people. No, you don't have to second it, right? Because we're going to continue it. So if somebody wants to call in right now and, um, participate in the public hearing now, they can do so. So if, uh, anyone wants to participate in the public hearing on, uh, ordinance thirty-eight thirty-four, please raise your hand. Anyone, Dylan?
I'm not showing anybody.
Okay, very good. I move the public hearing be continued to March tenth, 2021.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.